We're ready, thank you.
You're muted, Herb.
That's why I'm glad I got you, Terry. Call a meeting of the Safety and Security Committee meeting on Thursday, October 6, 2022, to order at 8:30 a.m. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Winmiller. Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Postello.
Present.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Meyer, was there any speaker cards submitted?
There were no public comment cards pertaining to today's safety and security meeting. However, public comments have been received pertaining to operations, and those comments will be included in the materials for next Friday's meeting.
Fine, thank you. This time I need approval to the minutes of the August 11th, 2022 Safety and Security Committee open meeting. I need a motion to approve them and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Coz eyes have it. Next on the agenda is the presentation, the Get Help Application Program. Kevin Scott and Jim Wallace, you have comments for this for informational only?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we approach you today for your continued support of the Chestnut Program, which is obviously next on the agenda, I thought it would be appropriate for you to hear from Mr. Wallace, who's the Business Director for Chestnut Health and who we've worked with profoundly with the expansion from St. Clair County, where this project originally started under the direction of Ken Sharkey. It was so successful, obviously, that we came to you over a year ago and asked for your support to expand the program to two specific locations in Missouri, Civic Center and our North Hanley Transit Centers. And so as we can, we come back to you today with a request for your support for renewal of those agreements. I thought it would be fitting that you just hear a brief overview from Jim Wallace about how the the program has grown and how profound it has become. And in addition to that, the influx of this Get Help application, which will bring our tracking and the way we provide services to a new level on the alignment. So Jim, I'd like to go ahead and introduce you to the committee.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. It's been a, it's been a journey this last year and just an exciting initiative. So I just wanted to give you a brief update. As you all well know, the project with Chestnut Clinicians and Peer Specialists started in St. Clair County over a year ago. We launched at Civic Center with a team and Transit Security Specialists, February 7th, and then in April of this year, 2022, we launched at the North Hanley location. So really what we're seeing, just a high-level overview across the line, across the three geographic jurisdictions. Every month, we're coming into contact with at least 300 individuals. Some are receptive to services, some are not. Some are, it's a relationship-building activity. But what we have in hand is data that reflects that two-thirds of those individuals that we come into contact, really their primary issue is being unhoused or homeless and in need of those type of resources. And then the rest of the individuals, the higher percentages are mental health or substance use. So our team's job is to connect, build relationship, and get referred to appropriate services. And with the help of the Bi-State team and, you know, we can transport, we can get those people connected with services with the relationships we're fostering. So that's all to say for the last year. And our team is doing a great job in our leadership, Chestnut Leadership. Emily Schwagel leads our teams. Really, the data that we are collecting is, I say, kind of a 20th-century modality of Excel sheets and monthly report outs. So over the last year, we've been fostering a relationship with Get Help. They're a national organization that's worked extensively in Los Angeles, on Skid Row, and East Coast with entities and really focused on that unhoused population having real-time dashboards and reports that we can kind of pivot and turn on a dime and make adjustments if we need to. For the last year, Get Help has been fostering relationships in St. Louis, in the St. Louis area with United Way, St. Patrick's Center, the city of St. Louis, and on both sides of the water, both in Missouri and in Illinois. So I, I, I know that in the last couple of weeks, Get Help has signed some contracts with the city of St. Louis, the United Way, some of the sober living homes. And we are kind of, I would say, a, an add-on. Our project is in its infancy, but because of the data that we're collecting and the populations that we're serving, we are officially launching our clinicians to have those same real-time dashboards beginning October 1. So at the end of this month, instead of Emily collecting the data off Excel sheets and reporting out in an email, we'll have real-time dashboards that will show reports that really significant outside insights to, for the outreach workers as well as Chestnut and Bi-State leadership to say, hey, this is what we're doing right? This is a weak area. This is a population that we're having trouble connecting with services. Maybe there's a capacity issue, but it's not like we have to wait a month or two to kind of figure that out. We can do it in real time. So I really am excited about this, this add-on to this ever-evolving, growing project. And I think it comes as a perfect storm where, where a lot of entities in the St. Louis metro region are coming together to work together. The Bi-State Chestnut Project is right there in the middle of it. And I think that's my quick overview, Kevin. I'm open to questions and hopefully have some good answers for you if you have questions.
Mr. Chair. If I could just expound a little bit more, just to remind the committee, and I'm certain that you're going to want to have more discussion about this as we move to the next agenda item. So just to remind everyone, the Chestnut Program, the relationship with Chestnut Mental Health or with healthcare began in 2020 in St. Clair County, Illinois. And in, under that, that pilot program, St. Clair County, the Transit District entered into an agreement with Chestnut Health to put one team of two clinicians on Metro Link. Okay? To interact with the passengers, the patrons on the platforms on the trains themselves. Because they had a profound footprint in Illinois, Chestnut is obviously based in Illinois. There was an enormous amount of resources that they brought to the table, enormous amount of connectivity and support resources that they, that they brought. That went so well, obviously, and we had such positive review of that. We then came to you with a desire to enter into an agreement with Chestnut Health to expand that program. Two teams of two clinicians to specifically focus on two static transit centers, the Civic Center and North Hanley here in Missouri. And so that, that has been done. And then in the meantime, St. Clair County has also entered into an added agreement or adding on to their agreement with Chestnut to add an additional team in Illinois as well. But what I want, what I want you to understand is that beyond money coming from Bi-State to fund a couple of the teams and money coming from the St. Clair County Transit District to fund a couple of teams, once those checks are paid, the money's paid, the team is completely married, okay? From the field operations aspect of, of the program on down, everything is married. All teams answer up to Emily and Emily Schwagel and Stacy Non. It is the same program as we move forward. And so we've been very, very happy with the progress of it. It has gained, I think, significant regional attention. There are a number of properties around the United States that have reached out to us about this program. And we're, we're very excited about where we sit with this. And this is, this is a platform that we should continue to build on as we talk about the totality of public safety in a comprehensive perspective. So with that, Mr. Chair, I yield the floor.
Fine, thank you, Kevin. A question before I open up to the other commissioners. What hours are they doing their service at this time?
Jim, want to take that one?
Yeah, with just the two teams, the, the two teams, I can tell you just across the boards over the last year, it's been Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 to 5:00. There has been involvement. I know in St. Clair, they're adding a second team, and I believe the hours will start 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and then an overlap, 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. I'm excited about that because that's, you know, it's, it's that coverage not during business hours only or regular day business hours only. I see that involvement as we move forward in Missouri as well. But historically, over the last year, it's really Monday through Friday, just with the capacity of the staff we have. But we are adding an evening staff in, I believe, the St. Clair region, and I'd love to do that on the Missouri side as well.
Very good. And Kevin, I know we had talked a couple of different times when this program first started in St. Clair County. There was a little growing pains. Has the security staff pretty well adapted to, to having the teams out there now?
Yeah, without question. So just so you know, each of the Chestnut teams, so there are four teams in total, two that work St. Clair County, two that work the two locations in Missouri. Each of those teams has an embedded Transit Security Specialist with them. And they have built a significant relationship with our contract security teams as well as along the alignment. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the significant relationship and the, the buy-in from our law enforcement partners as well with the program. I couldn't be happier with, with the way this has turned out. And quite frankly, this is probably the best money we've ever spent.
Very good. Any other commissioners have any questions of Jim or Kevin on the Chestnut Project?
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, program, everything. I guess I'm curious is what has been the actual progress? Are, are we seeing, are we getting these folks where they need to go get treatment? Are they accepting the treatment? Because that's, that's been a hard thing. I know where I'm at over in Collinsville, you know, and you guys are the experts in how to word it and how to, you know. So has there actually, have you seen, you know, when in your data, the numbers actually going down? Or what, like, what's going on with that?
Jim, if you don't mind, you want to take the lead on that better.
Sure. Sure. You know, it's what I tell individuals as I'm talking about this, and I'm talking about it daily. I had some meetings with City of St. Louis Leadership yesterday is, you know, having that clinical lens. And I'll tell you, while we do have clinicians out there with that clinical lens, we also have peer recovery support individuals, certified peer specialists that have been there, done that, that are so passionate, and it's really about relationship building. And while we have on a, on a, on a monthly basis, and I can get a report for you where our staff have been involved with the Bi-State Transit Security Specialists. We administer Narcan, you know. So not only do we give out Narcan for overdose, we're on a monthly basis administering that. You know, somewhere on the line, somewhere on one of the transit lines, there's, there's been issues. And then connecting them, you know, what, what I'll tell you is that previously, you know, we had some conversations and, okay, the, the person's revived with an Narcan medication, and they, they get in an ambulance, and then what happens? I'm not sure. They go to the emergency room? What's the rest of the story? Do they, do they get better? And that's the job, and I'll, I'll say that's the job of this data platform as well, is to keep in touch and connect and be able to tell those success stories. Hey, they got into workforce development down the street at Father Support Center, which has offices both in Missouri and Illinois, substance use. They're now gainfully employed. That's why we're not seeing them. And even though it's in its infancy, there's some real, real-time success stories that I could probably talk at length about, and I'd love to share with you individually or however is appropriate.
I think it would be, I don't know, beneficial, like, you know, maybe once a quarter or something like that? If you could update the, the Security Committee, just kind of the progress? Because I think it is a great story. And, you know, and then my other question was, and the rest of the board members might know, but I'm unaware. Is there a spot right now? It's like, so what is our policy on homeless on, on the platform? Do we have that policy? I'm assuming that we do. And is there a spot to send these folks, especially when it gets cold? Does St. Louis provide that or?
Go ahead, Jim.
So my, my three hours of meetings yesterday in St. Louis specific, really, and what we're seeing because two-thirds of the individuals were coming into contact or unhoused, and the cold weather's coming, is what's happening in terms of resources? So we can build a relationship and, and, and become on a first-name basis with some of these individuals. And, hey, help me out. Get me where I need to go. By State, we have the agreement that, you know, if, if someone's willing to get into a shelter or even a long-term housing bed process, we have transportation capacity to do that. The issue is that when you hit the brick wall with capacity, okay, then there's, is there a line out the door? So we're working on both ends, not only with our project engagement, but building that capacity. And there's a lot of moving parts, I think, in St. Louis, Missouri, St. Louis City specific. There's a lot of things going on with some of the federal ARPA dollars. I'm sure that's happening as well in St. Clair. But, and then having those relationships, so we're not cold calling a homeless resource. We have that relationship so we can get those individuals in quicker. And we're seeing that happen, especially with our biggest homeless partner, unhoused partner, which is St. Patrick's Center in St. Louis. Because these individuals, and I'll say, as Kevin always harps and, and makes me understand that this is one seamless system. It's not a Missouri and Illinois. These individuals know how to use the metro and the bridges to go back and forth. So we basic, we really have to have relationships on both sides. So it, there is a capacity issue, but because we have that clinical lens, we are getting more into services. But it's a conversation that's ongoing daily.
Yeah, I think it, it's, you know, a group effort between all counties and everything. But I just know in Madison County, we have a, there's nowhere to, to take these folks. And, you know, I think that's probably, and then it affects Bi-State big time, especially when the cold weather comes and stuff. And so, you know, I'm sure Talby, you're working with the, the mayor and the county and stuff. But, you know, just to have enough rooms available and places to take these folks to send them when, when the weather comes, you know. So I was just curious, and I think it's a great idea and great, great program, so.
Kevin, Kevin, if I would, based on Commissioner Cox's recommendation, especially with the new dashboard look that we're going to be getting on this, a quarterly report to be added in on yours, I think, would be, be very significant for, and useful what we're looking for.
Without question. We'd be more happy to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. Just to comment, Commissioner Moore and I both have experience in managing and administrating continuum of care, homeless resource funding in, in our past lives. And those unhoused homeless funding resources are available throughout the region. Madison County receives funding, probably millions of dollars, as does St. Clair. And as Jim said, the unhoused, they do move. They don't understand boundaries. So there's capacity limits, as mentioned. And also there's some unwillingness by some to, to receive assistance. So those are issues where Chestnut can come in because of mental, mental health concerns. But that funding exists even prior to all the federal COVID funding. And it's a nationwide issue, especially with transit authorities. Just wanted to comment.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Chairman Simmons, I have a comment, if I may. Miss Galladay, go ahead.
Well, yeah, Chairman Simmons, I just wanted to say that I think that this is an excellent program. But I noticed in the agreement that it's only a quote, an estimate on the cost. What would actually drive the cost up or down?
I, I think we're going to talk about, I think, I think we're going to talk about that in the next item there on the contract extension, and Kevin will be able to answer that probably. If we can just hold off for just a minute on that, okay?
Okay.
Commissioner Moore, you had a question?
Yes, I did, Chairman Simmons. Thank you. The question is, in light of the, the weather changing, light of the cold weather and the trains being a refuge, if you will, are we increasing security to account for the increased use of trains as, you know, temporary residents, if you will? Are we doing anything on those platforms to deter those individuals? I don't imagine they're buying tickets, a lot of them. So are we doing anything to deter their presence?
There are quite a few.
On our platforms.
Yeah, there, so our policy is to not let them use the trains as housing. Okay? And that's what we, we adjust our deployments, especially early in the mornings, when the trains first pull out, to try to mitigate a lot of that. Are we successful all the time at doing that? No. However, you'll be surprised that a lot of these individuals have all-day passes to ride the trains. So, but we address as much of, as much of the loop-riding for shelter as we possibly can. And before, we really didn't have options. And now with the Chestnut Program in place, there are resources that we can bring to the table that we didn't, we didn't really have access to before.
Commissioner Moore, just to follow up on that, I know in St. Clair County, Mr. Sharkey has been meeting with the communities that the platforms are located in, their jurisdictions. As recently as yesterday, he had another meeting with Belleville to address those issues with the weather, you know, the cold weather coming. So yes, we are taking a look at that. But I think as we, we get into that type of weather situation, this Chestnut Program is going to come that much more beneficial. And I can tell you, I've been out there and I've talked to some of the staff members from Chestnut and our security people, and that's why I was glad to hear Kevin say that, that, that marriage is really tightened up. And it, you know, the law enforcement and the security have really appreciated the fact to have the Chestnut workers out there. So it's, it's extra eyes and ears for them also. So I'm excited about this program, and I hope we can just continue to build on it.
I'll just add this one last item. Commissioner Beach facilitated a tour when I first came on with Kevin to take us around and see. And we met some of the Chestnut staff, and we were both impressed with how they were able to engage and how well they engaged with many other individuals, knowing, man, by first name. You know, they, they, they knew them. And so we felt at that time, several months ago now, that there would be positive outcomes associated with this relationship.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number six, extension of the contract between Chestnut Healthcare System and Bi-State Development Agency for the Transit Client Engagement Service. Kevin, you have some more comments?
Okay, so we've talked about how the, the agreements are structured. There are two, two agreements in place. One between St. Clair County, the Transit District, and Chestnut for the teams in Illinois, and one with Bi-State, a second agreement with Bi-State for the teams at Civic Center and North Hanley. The North Hanley Civic Center Agreement, or the Missouri Agreement, if you want to call it that, is going to expire on December 1st. And so in order to keep the Missouri teams in place, I'll need support from your committee to move this on to the full board for approval. Now, in preparing for this, I asked, so we don't have to do this on a yearly basis, I asked Chestnut for what a two-year agreement, amended agreement would look like for the two Missouri teams. So right now, our current cost in the first year of the, of the Missouri pilot was $353,525. The first year of this new agreement, we would be looking at a cost of about $390,000. That's about a 10% increase. That is attributed to, in most part, across the board, pay increases at Chestnut Health Systems to accommodate that. And then in year two of an amended agreement, we would be looking at about a $10,000 increase or about a 3% to cover overall merit increases for that year. So that is specific to the Missouri side. And my understanding is that that is pretty typical with the agreement that's in place also on the Illinois side. So we're asking for your, for your support and helping us continue this, this, I think, this very, very good investment that has had significant impact on us and helped us to mitigate a number of different issues on the system. So we're asking for your support to approve this agreement, to move this on to the full board for final approval in November. Mr. Chair.
And Kevin, your goal is to get these contracts to come due at the same time as we talked?
Absolutely. So I think the best approach to this, and we've, we've vetted a number of different options. And I've heard from leadership of the Transit District, obviously. I've heard from leadership of Bi-State. And how do we marry this into one congruent agreement? Now is not the most opportune time to do it because the St. Clair County Agreement is still in force until March 31st of 2023. So my plan is, and I met with the Chestnut Team early this week, Monday, I believe, on what, what would be palatable and the easiest way to marry the agreements under one agreement. And so our goal is to hopefully get your approval for the Missouri extension. And then as we move into first calendar quarter of 2023, as the St. Clair County District, Transit District Agreement approaches expiration, we would build an amendment to our agreement in force in Missouri to absorb the, the two teams in Illinois. And then I will come back to you with that amended agreement, asking for your support with that. I think that's the easiest way to do it. I think our general counsel feels that's the easiest way to do it. And I think the Chestnut Leadership and their legal team feel that that's the easiest way to do it as well.
Very good. Before I call for a motion for a vote, I just want to comment again. I know I said it earlier that it's, I think it's been a worthwhile program. And Kevin, I thank you for taking this and running with it. I thank Mr. Sharkey in St. Clair County. And, and I'd be admissed by not thanking our good friend Dana Rosenzweig from our St. Clair County Mental Health, who had actually approached myself and Mr. Sharkey with it. And I think it's proven to be an asset to what we're doing. So if there's no other comments from the commissioners, I'd entertain a motion authorizing Kevin to move forward with the extension of this contract.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Eyes have it. Thank you, Kevin. And James, I really appreciate the update, and we'll be looking forward to those quarterly reports as Mr. Commissioner Cox requested. Next item, Bi-State Oversight 2022 Annual Update. Andrew, are you with us?
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, members of the committee. Appreciate the opportunity, first off, to appear before you to present on behalf of our safety team alongside with our to present on behalf of our safety team alongside with our state safety oversight partners, the annual report for MetroLink. We are going to put together, we've put together a presentation for you that will encompass all of the state safety oversight activities and summary reports for MetroLink. Calendar year 2022, I'm joined with distinguished members of our state safety oversight team today that I will introduce. And then I will turn the presentation over to that team to give that to you all. Let me make sure I can share my screen. All right. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. So at this time, I'll turn it over to our state safety oversight partners. We've got Justin Sobek, Alexis Billingsley, and Lindbergh Askew, representing Missouri and Illinois of the team. So Justin, I'll turn it over to you first.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Andrew. I'm Justin Sobek, State Safety Oversight Program Manager for MoDOT. And half of our BSSO effort that we jointly share with IDOT. I'll let the IDOT team introduce themselves.
Hello, Commissioners and Safety and Security Staff of Bi-State. My name is Alexis Billingsley. I am the IDOT SSO Chief Rail Transit Safety Oversight Manager.
Hello and good morning, Commissioners and Bi-State Safety Team. I am Lindbergh Askew III, the Rail Transit Safety Coordinator for IDOT and Bi-State Safety Oversight.
Commissioners and Bi-State Safety and Security Team, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about our safety oversight responsibilities. And the Illinois Department of Transportation, the Missouri Department of Transportation have joint state safety oversight responsibilities. And we work together to fulfill those requirements for MetroLink. And today we'll be discussing the Bi-State Safety Oversight Program requirements and activities, the bipartisan infrastructure law bill. And as it pertains specifically to our state safety oversight agencies in the United States and all of the rail fixed guided public transportation systems like MetroLink. The Safety Management System Implementation, which is required by the Federal Transit Administration. We will provide a summary of the FTA reportable events. And we will be sharing with you how the Bi-State Safety Oversight Agency and Bi-State Development collaborate together for a safety system, safe system for the public.
So a little bit about our unique BSSO program. We're one of, I think the only SSO in the country that has a joint agency set up like this. So again, it's a cooperative effort between the Missouri Department of Transportation and, and Illinois Department of Transportation. On January 1st, 2017, St. Clair County Transit District SSO Authority was formally seated to Illinois Department of Transportation. And so that was the beginning of the BSSO. And then on August 29th, 2018, the FTA certified IDOT as a compliant SSO agency under the new Part 674 regulations. And our certification at MoDOT followed a month later on September 24th. So we are both have been 674 compliant to administer PTAS implementation and certification at your agency.
Our Bi-State Safety Oversight Agency is governed by federal and state regulations. We are required to follow federal regulations for the Safety Loop 49 USC 5330, MAP 21 49 USC 5329, 49 CFR Part 674, 673, and 672. And the newly signed bill bipartisan infrastructure law, also known as the BIL, which we'll be discussing further later on in this presentation. The state regulations are the Missouri Revised Statutes, Chapter 389, Sections 998 and 1005, Missouri State Code 7 CSR 265, Chapter 9, the Illinois Complied Statutes 45 ILCS 111, and Illinois Public Act 102 0559, also known as the Rail Safety Act. Next slide, please.
Thank you. The BSSO Program Standard Manual. The BSSO completed the annual revision and update of our Program Standard Manual for 2022 in June and August. The changes for the Program Standard Manual, we implemented the new State Safety Oversight Program and Public Transportation Agency Plan, also known as the PTAS. These requirements, which were included in the BIL, which is the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Bill that was passed. We revised the timeline for annual review and distribution. And the final distribution was updated as well. Incorporated requirements for the Emergency Preparers Plan was also added to this section. This was a transition from formerly the Emergency Operations Plan, but that was a more tactical document. And this actually, the EPPP, we fulfilled needs that were more suited for BSD. We also added cybersecurity events as events that are reportable to the Transportation Security Administration as reportable events and added informational, added additional information on the handling of SSI documents, which are safety-sensitive security information documents. Next slide. And here are the BSSO review, I mean, review documents and approval. Here are the documents that the BSSO reviews and approves over the course of a year and sometimes longer than a year. The first two, which are the PTAS and the System Security Safety Plan. These we review annually. And the EPPP and the EIP, we review and approve as revised by BSD. Also, the BSD Annual Internal Audit Report and Certification. These are the results. We approve the results from the internal audits as long, along with the certification letter from the accountable executive. And this must be formally approved, reviewed and approved by the BSSO annually. We also approve accident report, accident investigation reports and corrective action plans, which we will get into later.
So some of the new bipartisan infrastructure law requirements, as released earlier in 2022, included establishment of the Employee Safety Committee. And the purpose of this committee is to ensure that frontline employees of the agency have input into the safety processes. So this, this dovetails nicely with the SMS that Bi-State was already working on. And this allows more of a, a voice across the agency from those in the field to to bring up any concerns or things that they, they see or may have. Another part of the BIL is a risk-based inspection program. We are awaiting a formal directive from the FTA on what this is actually going to look like. But we've already incorporated what we feel are many of the requirements of the risk-based inspection already on our oversight with the agency, being random tours of the shops, facilities, or other onsite activities at, at our, at our discretion. So the FTA will issue that final guidance and will work to formalize that program in the next upcoming Program Standard Manual update. Employee assaults are also covered now under the bipartisan infrastructure law. So be it, we're going to work with BSD to analyze employee assault data in order to develop programs that may minimize the number of assaults on BSD employees. And again, this pairs up really nicely with the mental health strides that the agency is taking to work with, with Chestnut Health and the, the security team to, to ensure that, you know, some of those issues that, that do make it onto the system are handled appropriately. Exposure to any infectious diseases since the pandemic, rail transit agency must have language in its PTAS that is consistent with either CDC, state or regional health, Department of Health guidelines. And BSD elected to specify that it will follow CDC guidelines in the PTAS. That had a little bit of latitude there and we support that direction. De-escalation training is also another important factor in this too. All maintenance operations and, and personnel directly responsible for safety of the system are now going to be completing de-escalation training. And then risk reduction as well. So using performance targets on a rolling three-year average of the data submitted by the agency to the National Transit Database and allocation of a certain amount of 5307 funds to safety-related projects. So again, we, we work hand in hand with the safety team and elsewhere across the agency to, to make sure that these expectations are, are being met.
The Joint Labor Management Safety Committee, as required by the BIL, the BSD, has established a Joint Labor Management Employee Safety Committee Meeting. This Joint Labor Management Safety Committee, it should be comprised equally of frontline employees and management as standing members. Others may sit in as observers during this meeting. And the FTA did not define what it means to be a frontline employee, but the union could also deem could select frontline employees who are not a part of the union. BSD has successfully created a committee that is compliant with these requirements this year. They did so prior to the July 31st deadline. And they have also implemented it into their PTAS before deadline, before that deadline, which was December 31st of 2022. The purpose of this committee is to have frontline employees involved in the identification of hazards and also involved in developing strategies to help mitigate them. The committee will also review mitigations which are already in place and give feedback to whether or not they are effective and how they can be approved. The BSD ESC has these duties outlined in their formal committee charter.
So a little bit about SMS implementation. SMS is Safety Management Systems. And this promoted through the core nine, or nine core safety training classes, including the, now the de-escalation training. So again, the establishment of the Joint Labor Management Employee Safety Committee goes a long way to, to getting the safety management system out to everyone in the agency. And again, you know, we want employees to feel that they can report any concerns or hazards through multiple channels and without any sort of reprisals from anyone else in the agency that, that may be affected by that. So there were a few items that we found in the 2021 triennial audit that we have since addressed with the agency regarding SMS implementation. And again, continued to implement and improve this through the internal, internal audit program. So we were able to recently observe the 2022 internal audit sessions, which Crystal Mezner's group heads up. And saw and, and found a lot of good outtakes from those and ways that the agency will continue to offer improvement on those in the future.
MetroLink events that are required to be reported to the Federal Transit Administration are defined in 49 CFR Part 674. We refer to them as 674 reportable events. They are a loss of life occurring at the scene or within 30 days following the accident, report of a serious injury to a person, a collision involving a rail transit vehicle, a runaway train, and evacuation for life safety reasons, any derailment of a rail transit vehicle at any location, at any time, whatever the cause. Next slide, please. In 2022, MetroLink had three collisions, two gray crossing collisions and one collision with a downed overhead catenary wire. Those three collisions were, one was red at King's Highway. And then most recently, the red-blue at 37th Street Gray Crossing. And the catenary event was red-blue at Civic Center. There were two evacuations that were security-related. In 2020, which is the left bar, I don't know if you can see my cursor, there were two reportable events. In 2021, there was an uptake of six reportable events. And as we just discussed, three reportable, 674 reportable events in 2022. Next slide, please. Oh, and it's good to, I wanted to make sure that we made a note that MetroLink had no derailments. The collisions that occurred were with a motor vehicle. There were no collisions, what we call train with train collisions, where two MetroLink trains collide. Since January 2020, there have been seven reportable events that occurred at gray crossings. There were multiple events at King's Highway and Martin Luther King Gray Crossing, and most recently, the 37th Street Gray Crossing. Some of the steps that we've taken once, I think after the third King's Highway gray crossing accident that involved a, another vehicle, a motorist. We began to talk about some of the things that could be done to make those gray crossings safer. Some of the steps that we took were we, IDOT and MoDOT. We lent our support to MetroLink and Bi-State, trying to think of some engineering solutions to make this gray crossing safer. And that included a meeting with IDOT District 8 in Collinsville to discuss possible solutions to improving the safety of the gray crossing engineering controls and looking at the MUTCD Section 8 for railroads, trying to see if there were some things that we could do with the gray crossing, including the crossing gates and the lights, any additional signage, which IDOT District 8 did add additional signage to King's Highway, reviewing the pavement markings, making sure the pavement markings were not faded. And then reviewing the line of sight, making sure that the sight distance from the approaches of the gray crossing as you approach where the train would cross the street or the road, whether there was enough sight distance to make sure that you could see that the train was coming. And also during the BSSO's line rides, we observed, I myself have observed that they are hunking their horn as they enter the gray crossing and the gates are coming down as they entered, before they enter the gray crossing. So we did all of those investigations to just try to see what's happening out there and how we can improve that gray crossing. Corrective action plans. In 2020, we opened about 10 corrective action plans and we closed 10 corrected, no, five corrective action plans. And we closed 10 corrective action plans. In 2021, we closed about five corrective action plans. And then we opened about 19 corrective action plans. And in 2021, it's important to note that we did audit MetroLink, the State Safety Oversight Audit of MetroLink. And they also had their own internal audits, which was, which would explain the uptick in, in corrective action plans. In 2022, our internal, our Bi-State Safety Oversight Audit of MetroLink, the corrective action plans were approved. And that's why you see an increase in the number of opened corrective action plans. And also, MetroLink did their own internal audits for their security systems and for their own systems under the PTAS, which would explain the increase in internal audit caps and Bi-State Safety Oversight caps. Next slide.
BSD has done a great job on the, on the cap front too. And this directly relates to to SMS and other PTAS implementations too. Cap work used to be done at our either bimonthly or quarterly meetings. And now there's a monthly corrective action plan working group due to the, the volume of caps that actually better paces our workload as far as opening and closing caps. And the, our verification and implementation of the, of the mitigations as a, as a tool to measure continuous improvement on the agency. So thank you all to the Safety and Internal Audits Team for their assistance in, in making that monthly forum a very useful opportunity to take care of all the cap corrective action plan work. So these are some other areas in which BSSO and Metro Safety collaborate through the triennial audits that are conducted on our behalf by the Internal Audit Group, Event Investigation. We give that authority to the agency to conduct those event investigations on our behalf. And then we have the ability to follow up with our own independent investigation if necessary. To date, we have not had to do that. We also sit in on any drills and exercises that the Emergency Management and Security Group conduct. Safety certification of any sort of capital projects or system enhancements that are ongoing. Uh, safety certification of any sort of uh capital projects or system enhancements that are ongoing. Uh, we sit in also in the frontline safety team meetings, too, and participate on those so we can um help understand the the hazards as they come up. Uh, we also participate in the Configuration Change Board. That's a monthly meeting that's uh very useful, again, for any sort of um either ongoing capital projects or other changes that uh need to be implemented across the system. The CAP Advisory Review Committee, also a monthly um monthly meeting as well. And then we also have our um our ongoing um now quarterly for two thousand and twenty-three uh BSSO BSD safety meetings. And again, uh, because we sit in on these other um committees or meetings once a month, we are able to roll our meetings out to quarterly, which um allows better workflow and utilization of of everyone's time within the agency. So that was kind of a an outtake of of the new um SMS implementation needing a little bit more attention from us, but also the fact that that we can participate in all those various forums and and be um better in touch with what's what's going on through the agency instead of having to get that on a bimonthly or quarterly basis. So again, um, kudos to everyone for um basically im- implementing the SSO and in in those various forums and uh making it more uh more open for our our involvement and engagement and things.
All right. Thank you, Justin, Alexis, the SSO Team, Lindberg. Um, Commissioner, that concludes our report. Are there any questions? Yeah, I had one before I opened it up to the other uh Commissioners. Um, I appreciate the report, uh the detailed report on it, and I I definitely want to go over it a little bit more myself, but in your opinion, is there any area or any department that we are lacking uh that needs some improvement in?
No, um, but right off the top, no. Um, compared to other transit agencies that are contract support Transportation Resource Associations, um, we we are happy to to uh offer up just about anything that BSD presents to us as a as a um industry best practice.
Very good. It's such. That's great to hear. Any other comments from uh the other Commissioners?
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
It's important to note that uh no transit agency is is ever perfect, but one thing that I really noticed and appreciate about um MetroLink and ByState is that when they see that there's something that should be improved, they put upon themselves their own internal audits and their own internal corrective actions to make their processes and procedures better, which is really important. They have a really good safety culture, and even as the federal government has um instituted this new legislation to make sure that all of the agencies in the country have a good safety culture and that frontline employees are included in those um safety best practices. It's really important for you all to know that um MetroLink and ByState, they have a really good system on how they solve problems. I think that's really important to say, because you don't see that across the state. There's some resistance to change, and the safety cultures aren't always the same across the country, and I just wanted you all to know that.
Well, and I really appreciate those comments, because that that makes me feel a lot better uh in this committee, uh, because we take uh we take our responsibilities really serious, and hearing those type of comments, I think, speaking for myself, makes me feel uh at ease. Any other questions uh from the Commissioners? Or comments?
I appreciate the work, and the same with with her. Uh, that makes me feel a lot better knowing that. Um, and and seeing all the data, and uh, so yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that uh that report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, uh, unscheduled business. Uh, Mr. Roach, is there any unscheduled business?
I'm sorry, Chair, but can we take a motion on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. Uh, I need a motion to approve uh the report that was provided uh by Andrew and team.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Now, Mr. Roach, any unscheduled business?
No, Chair, I have no unscheduled business. I have one brief comment.
Yes, sir.
And that comment is simply, as you saw with the state safety oversight, it includes the professionalism bought both by Missouri and Illinois, Justin Lindberg and Alexis and their teams. This is a a working relationship. Sometimes it's difficult when you're working through difficult situations, for instance, the gray crossing accidents in Illinois. These are imperfect systems. Uh, however, when we have teams that are working so relentlessly together, I think you see the result, and that includes our state partners. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for the comment. Uh, this time, Myra, call for the uh Data Future Board and Committee Meetings.
Yes, the next Operations Committee meeting will be held on Friday, October fourteenth at eight thirty AM. The next Audit Finance and Administration Committee meeting will also be on Friday, October fourteenth, following the Ops Meeting, and the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, November eighteenth at eight thirty AM.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, uh, I need a motion to go into an executive session um as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy Chapter Ten, Section ten point zero eight zero D one legal, personal, under ten point zero eight zero D three, D eleven, security, and D sixteen, rail, bus, and facilities, safety, and accidents. Do I have a motion to uh go into an executive session?
More moves?
Have a second?
Second.
And we need a roll call vote, Myra.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastello? Commissioner Golladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney? Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. See you in just a few minutes.